Good evening, everyone. At this time, I'd like to call the February 11th, 2021 meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission to order and ask for a roll call.
Okay, Jason Dale.
Here.
Robert Sherry.
Here.
Charles Ebon.
Here.
Gina Morris.
Here.
Chris Wright.
Here.
Sharon Capri.
Oh, I bet.
Got to turn your audio on.
Hit the little microphone in the corner, lower corner. Okay, we'll go Jeffrey Musall.
Here.
Colin Bullock.
Here.
Sharon Capri. But she is there, right?
She is here.
Okay. Wait, we have. Screen, Sharon. Everybody's there. Okay.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open the meeting up to any public comments. Is there anyone in the waiting room that wishes to address topics not on the agenda?
Robin, do we have anybody sitting out there?
There is nobody.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, hearing no public comments, we can move on to the consent calendar. And at this point, is there any discussion we'd like to have at the calendar, or are we ready to move on to approving the minutes?
I noticed the number nine of additional activities for the community Development Department, that they had number nine on there was fences and industrial zones. And I noticed that outside the city boundaries, you can have an electrified fence. And so that might need to be addressed now that they're taking down the industrial part or property that was bought. It's just something throwing out there on that agenda list. Just because it's electrified and I know they'll have to, with the population being down there, I don't know, I know they don't allow it in city boundaries. So I don't.
So actually, at the mill site, there is no electric fences.
There is none.
There is none, there's only a chain. Yeah, it's a fake sign. Don't believe everything you read. There is no electric fence, there's just a chain link fence that closes the.
Well, that's wonderful.
Place where we have the potential where we might have a an animal fence is down on 14th. Where an individual has some horses. But that's the only place down in the in the riverfront area.
Okay, that's all I was thinking, but if it's a, yeah, never mind. And on the density policy, I don't know if I showed this to Doug a while back. And it's in our comprehensive, okay, comprehensive plan on page 22. But there was a type of extra thing for densities. And it was C that was supposed to be omitted. That's all, it's just a duplicate.
Are you referring to information in the minutes? Themselves?
Just bringing things up that were asked or not on the agenda.
Now, so where we're at is the point about the consent agenda for the minutes. And if there is any changes to the minutes, and if there are not, or if there is, what change needs to be made, and then a motion and a second to approve.
Okay, I did want to bring something up in the minutes. I really apologize for not making it clear. When I agreed that I thought a wetland delineation should be done, it wasn't for this area. I was just agreeing with that letter for like the City of Newburgh eventually, hopefully at some point. I wasn't making myself clear, but I know that they already had a wetlands things down there. So it should read for be done for the City of Newburgh, not just that site.
Okay.
And that was all. Hoping that someday, that might happen, but that was it.
So Mr. Chair, what you have is a comment about a modification to the minutes. And so we would need a motion with the modification and a second, and then a vote.
Yeah, this time, if someone would like to offer a motion to accept the minutes amended as proposed.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I moved we accept the meeting minutes with the amendments as proposed by Commissioner Wright.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve and a second. Can we have a vote?
This one just needs to be, doesn't need to be a roll call, so it can just be a voice vote. And if everybody agrees, put your thumbs up. Thumbs up.
Everyone consent?
I see thumbs up, seven zero.
Consent, okay. All right, now, the next item that we have is a legislative public hearing. So at this point, I'd like to call the order, the legislative public hearing, the purpose of which is to discuss a resolution recommending City Council amend the comprehensive plan for updating section four of subsection B of the population projections during the public testimony. Persons will be allowed five minutes to speak. And at this time, I'd like to call for any abstentions or objections to jurisdiction.
Hearing none.
Hearing none. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to staff for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Doug Rux, Community Development Director. So as we traditionally do, we'll we'll enter the entire staff report and all the attachments and exhibits into the record. So this is a pretty straightforward proposal. The legislature changed state law and now Portland State University does population projections for all counties and cities within the state of Oregon. They did this in 2017, we're in region three. This is our second iteration on the population projections. And so they finished this up and they became official at the end of June of 2020. The population projections are used extensively for the city to do our long range planning work. So it ties into things like our water master plan, transportation wastewater, stormwater, urban growth boundary expansions, housing needs analysis, economic opportunities analysis. And so it's a very important number. So we haven't updated these for basically three years at this particular point in time. This was initially started by the City Council adopting a resolution to initiate the amendment process. When they do that, they only initiate it, they don't make a decision, and we have to go through the public hearing process and the public involvement process. We did do the notice for this hearing, it was posted in four places, it was put in the Newburgh Graphic, it's also up on the city's website. In your staff report, we received comments from staff and agencies. Generally, you'll see that there was an issue of no conflict based upon the particular proposal. We did receive comments from the Department of State Lands. And this is consistent with other cases we've seen about doing a local wetlands inventory for the City of Newburgh. And as I've indicated before, is that it would be a great thing to do. I can remember in the old days, I can say that, because I am old, is that the state used to provide grant funding to do local wetland inventories, and they don't do that anymore. So funding to be able to do this without come out of the general fund and compete with a lot of other desires, wishes, and needs for the particular community. In Exhibit A of your staff report has the specific language related to the changes in the comprehensive plan. So the first of those is under the projections, and we've identified specifically where this information comes from. And it comes out of the 2020 report for consolidated population forecast for Yamhill County and its urban growth boundaries and the area outside of the UGB 2020 to 2070. And there's an entire report that's available that breaks down every community within Yamhill County for those particular projections. The table four dash one updates the information for this. And so we have the 2010, which is the census numbers, the official number. The 2020 number is a projected number. We will be getting hopefully in later 2021 official US Census numbers on the population from Newburgh. When that happens, we'll do another amendment and put in the official number. But then there's the forecast numbers that take us out through 2025, 30, 35, 40, 45, and 50. And as you can see, when we get out to 2045, we're projected to have a population of a little under 35,000. And by the time we get to 2050, he is a little over 37,000. Exhibit B identifies all of the comprehensive plan requirements. And so we've addressed all of the statewide planning goals as well as addressing all of the City of Newburgh comprehensive plan and policy requirements. And because this is a legislative action, you also have in your report section, subsection C on the municipal code, which outlines the process that is required to go through all of this. So again, this is a pretty straightforward proposal that's before you this evening. So with that, I will stop, Mr. Chair, and turn it back over to you for any public comment.
All right, thank you. At this time, is there anyone that would like to offer public comment or testimony?
There is no public comment.
No public comment, okay. Are there any final comments from staff and as well as a recommendation?
So staff's recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2021-362, which recommends the City Council adopt an ordinance approving CPTA 20-0006.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from commissioners?
Yeah, one, Commissioner Wright. On page five of 17, second paragraph down where it's a strike through. And then the population forecast was updated 2020. Anyway, at the bottom of that, it says Appendix C. Is that included in here?
So you have different page numbers than I have. Can you state that again, Commissioner? I'm trying to find the correct, the proper page that you're on.
Right above the future population forecast. Not the paragraph above it, but the one before that that you just read. Let me see if I can find it better. It is the Newburgh Comprehensive Plan shall be amended as follows, and then for population growth, B, population projections. And then one, that middle paragraph starts with Oregon Revised Statutes, ORS 195.033.
Still trying to find the right page to correlate to where you're talking about. Always the issue of having paper copies and electronic copies, and I have a paper copy.
I know, and it's like, yeah, here's the old paper copy, but it's starting not to be right anymore. This was from 2019. We've done a lot of amendments since then.
We have the four years of population projections being many of the factors. So the only thing that we're amending would be under Table four dash one, Population Future Forecast. And underneath that, in this packet, there is an A and a B. And A is the 2,000 population as the US Census estimate of Newburgh, plus the estimate of population outside the city limits. And then B is the 2010 population of the US Census estimate of.
Yeah, it's above that, above that graph. Look at the paragraph above that, and then a paragraph prior to that. It's right in the middle of.
The forecast, the people's East County was required to establish the forecast. Initial population forecast was 19 and its cities. Population forecast was updated in the, as in the urban growth boundaries outside the city found it. A pen, it was like, so the appendix C is referring to the PSU forecast document itself. And so I did not include that entire document in your staff report.
Okay, because I'm all over for it, and our paper copies and stuff. Would it be advantageous to put PSU Appendix C?
Well, it says the the population forecast was updated in 2020 from the report coordinated population forecast for Yamhill County, its cities, urban growth boundaries, UGB, and urban and area outside UGBs 2020 to 2070, and are found in Appendix C, detailed population forecast results, figure 24, Yamhill County subareas forecasted total population. So if you go back.
If it's with the other text out of there, it's closer and it may, so people may pick up it's Portland State.
If you go back to the very beginning of that paragraph, it says Oregon Revised Statutes requires that Portland State University Population Research Center issue a population forecast for each county and urban growth boundary outside the metro region, not in less than once every four years. So I think it all ties together.
Yeah, it's just un, kind of unclear, like, reading through it, I was just thinking, oh, well, they got an appendix A, B, and C, so. And then the figure, it just really threw me off because I kept looking for it. I looked at the PSU website, I looked in our planning stuff, but I wasn't looking in the right area.
What I can, what I can.
Six whatsoever.
What I can do at the end of the double underline is put it in a closed paren. PSU. Which is Portland State University.
Yeah. That's, yeah, otherwise, I don't know, you might get calls, who knows? But, yeah. Yes, please.
I can do that.
That may, we probably clarify it. Thank you. Thank you, Doug. That was my only thought on the whole thing, but, yeah. They did really good. You guys did really good, too, on the forecast and getting all the information together. A second time, by the way. All right, that was it from Commissioner Wright. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or questions? Hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to offer a motion?
Of a motion to approve, Commissioner Wright, motion to approve Resolution 2021-362 with attachments A and B. Did I say all that numbers right?
We actually be Exhibits A.
Exhibits, oh, that's right, not attachments, exhibits A and B. You are correct. Thank you, Doug.
And do we need to also add as an amendment, what Commissioner Wright proposed to change?
Yes. In the closed prints, add Portland State University, PSU.
With the amendments to said paragraph that Doug just commented about, in parentheses, PSU. Thank you.
It's a second.
I will second that.
We have a motion to adopt the resolution, and we have a second. At this time, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Okay, Jason Dale.
Yes.
Robert Sherry.
Yes.
Charles Ebon.
Yes.
Gina Morris.
Yes.
Chris Wright.
Yes.
Sharon Capri.
Yes.
Jeffrey Musall.
Yes.
Thank you.
And with that, the resolution passes. Okay, moving on, it looks like our next item is new business. And we're going to discuss a middle housing briefing. Turn over to staff for that.
Robin, would you like to pull up the PowerPoint, please? Okay, so we have 44 slides. I am not going to take 44 minutes.
Woo, yeah.
So I'm going to go through this and hit some highlights. Robin will advance the slides. And where appropriate, we'll just kind of quickly go over some of the slides. But I wanted to give you a continued update of where we're at with the middle housing program, which is part of House Bill 2001. And so this is the material that we presented to the Ad Hoc Middle Housing Advisory Committee at their last meeting. Next slide. Next slide. So we did a survey after we, back in December. And so we had a little under 200 respondents, 192. And they scaled this on a one, two, three, or four, four being very important and one not being important. Next slide. So again, I'm not going to read all of this. You had it in your packet. So you've been able to see it. But, you know, what is the top policy goals for this? And you can see, and you'll see a continuous theme through this process is parking, 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 parking. So parking is one critical issue. Housing affordability is another. Creating home ownership is another. And making housing compatible with other housing when you do this middle housing. Again, middle housing, we're talking about duplex, tries, quads, cottage clusters, and and townhomes. And so you can see in the score on the right hand side is that they ranked all of all of these. And so some of them were not as important as others, but kind of the top two are really getting to that parking issue and affordability. Next slide. Duplex codes. And again, this kind of all ties back to the parking is how do you park garage and carports? Concern that we heard out of the survey work is people parking on the street, taking up on street parking, not having parking for other residents that live in a particular neighborhood. And I think one of the important, another important piece of this is allowing a variety. We've talked before about attached, detached duplex units. And so that kind of floated up to the top to allowing a wide variety of those housing types. And when we talk about overall building size, we're really talking about the building envelope, that massing of that structure and making sure that they're compatible with other homes that may be in a particular neighborhood. Next slide. For triplexes is, and quads is, again, it gets back to parking. And, you know, allowing these different configurations, and we've showed you slides before about different ways that triplexes and quads could be done. Not so much of an issue was really about the setbacks and the lot coverage in our residential zones. Next slide. For townhouses, again, you see, it's a repetitive theme. The top is parking. And then limiting the maximum number of units came close to a three, so not at the top, highest importance, but pretty close. And the overall size of the buildings. And again, so this gets back to some of the issues about massing. Next slide. Cottage clusters, again, parking was number one. And then the second one was about these connections between the buildings and the streets. And so we'll get later to some diagrams and drawings that will kind of show you what cottage clusters could look like. And, but how do you make those relationship of those dwellings or that particular type of development to a public street? And then again, kind of limiting the overall size. Next slide. So duplex, going to drill down a little bit deeper. Next slide. So we're going to have to go through the process of amending a whole wide variety of language in our development code. And I included that draft, preliminary draft language in your packet this evening. Again, we're not going to go down into all of the details of that. But I think the important message here is that if you allow a detached single family home, is that the lot size has to be the same for a duplex. And so that applies to our R1, R2, R3, RP, and our airport residential zones. And so it, what I tried to tell people, if you had a 2,300 square foot, single family home, you could have a 2,300 square foot duplex. It's just two units. But it's still, if you're in R1, it would be on a 5,000 square foot lot. If it's an R2, it would be on a 3,000 square foot lot. And I think we've talked about this before, and this is the one about parking. So the administrative rule says that we can only require one off street, no more than one off street parking space per duplex. So that means if you have a duplex, you've got two off street. The developer can provide more parking if they want to, but we can only require up to a maximum of one. And the committee has identified requiring one off street parking space. That means if you have a family have two cars, the other car is going to be parked in the street. Next slide. On these dimensional standards, so lot coverage, we're not proposing to make any changes to lot coverage. Going to keep those the same as the existing single family. Height is one issue that's under discussion by the committee. So at their last meeting, they talked about, should we increase the structure height from 30 feet in our residential zones to 35 feet? And you can see on the slide here, R1, R2, RP, and the AR. No recommendation has come from the committee yet. We will be talking about that more next week. And then keeping all of our setbacks basically the same as what we have in our existing code. Next slide. So then we have master plans, and I brought this up before. And so you can see the list of the master plans that we have. And so we're toggling through, do we just make changes to development code regulations, or do we also need to make changes to the master plan itself? And things have been done in a hybrid way in the past. Some things have only been code changes and not master plans, some of them being master plan and code changes. So I have to work with the consultant team and resolve that here in the next week or so. So then we have Springbrook District, which will be required wherever there's a single family home, allowing a duplex, the Northwest Specific Plan, the Springbrook Oaks Specific Plan. And then we have our Riverfront District, which is the newest one that was adopted back in September of 2019. Riverfront is the easiest one, anticipating some of this coming along. I think what's important to note is that the Springbrook District Northwest and Springbrook Oaks are actually considered specific plans that are in our code. The Riverfront District is only a guiding document, so there's some distinct subtle distinctions in there. Next slide. Targets. So here's where we at in our comp plan. We talk about in our R1, our target density is 4.4, R2 is 9, R3 is 16. There is no density target for the RP, and in the airport residential, it's 8.8. And then you can see the minimum lot sizes that are allowed. And then you can see the minimum lot sizes that are allowed in each of those particulars of. And then consultants put together what the maximum density would be, uh, per dwelling unit. And the little asterisks at the bottom talks about does not, and these are based upon gross acres. And so you can see along the bottom, some of the maximum density. Next slide. Heights, again, I mentioned this earlier. We're talking about, uh, should that be raised to thirty-five feet rather than the current thirty feet? And part of that discussion is with thirty feet, you basically two-and-a-half-story homes. And we have topography in Newburgh is the areas to develop or up north and in the hills. Um, and we, there are some challenges with definitions in the Oregon Structural Specialty Code and our development code about how we measure structure height. And so if you went to thirty-five feet, um, you know, you can get that full third floor. But then the counter to that is, oh, would that allow, you know, our typical, single-family home? And all of a sudden, it's twenty-three-hundred square feet, you go to a full, uh, additional floor or half a story on that third one. Is it just promoting more of the large homes rather than the affordable homes? So more to come on that topic. Uh, next slide. These are just some graphics about how we measure height on different structures, flat roofs, mansion roofs, pitch roofs, and so forth. The key here is when you have a pitch roof, we measure to the midpoint. So half the distance between the eve and the ridge line of that particular structure. Next slide. Graphics kind of showing some different designs. On your right, no garage in the front. On the left, a garage in the front. So each kind of design style has a different feel and appearance from the street. Next slide. Again, another graphic looking at, uh, some different homes and relating to structure height. And so the one on your left is really kind of a two-and-a-half-story. Even the one on the right's two-and-a-half-story. It's not a full three-story. Next slide, please. Another graphic, uh, showing just some topography issues and the difference of how you measure, uh, structure heights. Next slide. So then we had a long discussion. Uh, the committee gave us a lot of feedback, uh, which we are including in our analysis and their next round of review. Next slide. Other middle housing. Next slide. Okay. So this portion of the presentation was dealing on design standards. And so there are things that we can do with triplexes, quads, townhomes, and cottage clusters. They are limited. There's only certain things that we can do by administrative rule. Um, and so we walked through with the committee about what those different options were. Next slide. So triplex and quads, we can deal with some entry orientation issues. We kind of have this minimum-maximum, uh, requirement for window coverage. And so that's the coverage that faces the streets, fifteen percent. Uh, garage or that off-street parking component and how we deal with driveways. And again, different design types have different approaches. Some have driveways on the back, often an alley or a private drive. Some have the garage and the driveway at the front of the home. Next slide. So these are some graphics that we shared with the, with the committee. And so you can see on the top left, kind of your dwelling unit, your garage, it's tucked back a little bit from the front of the building. It's got a driveway. The one below that, the difference here is kind of with the porch orientation. And so on the top right, top left, you might not have a covered porch. The other one on the bottom left, you may have a covered porch. Uh, if you go to the top right, then, uh, we're dealing with basically dwelling units are on one lot and kind of share pedestrian access that goes into the entrance to each unit. And each unit has a garage. So again, there's no one of these design types that is correct. It's kind of, it's a market approach. The developer builds it. What do they think that the consumer would like to have for that particular type of dwelling unit? Next slide. So here's an idea of kind of a basic street-facing facade. It's pretty straightforward. You don't see any garages in this one. But you can see the hatched area for the qualifying window coverage. So you could have doors, your front windows, windows up on the second floor. You've got some gable roof, uh, design elements. You've got some pitch and, uh, and a front porch. And then you got your doorway, which is that, that main entrance into each of those particular units. Next slide. Here's a little bit different, uh, perspective of how a triplex could be done, where you have garages. And so instead of creating what the commonly is called the snout house, where the garage projects out and the residential unit sets back my house. Uh, here, you've got a parking space, um, that's set back, but the house, a portion of that dwelling unit actually projects out in front of that particular garage. But in this one, you have a bunch of driveways. And so it has a different feel and appearance. Next slide. Here's a four-plex or quad, uh, similar to the previous slide where you have the driveways in the garage, but the house projects out in front of the garage. So the garage does not dominate the design type as you see it from the street. Uh, we're having some conversations with the committee about the width of driveways as well. Um, and there are some requirements and administrative rule. And then we have some things in our development code that we may need to change as well. Next slide. Um, here's a different approach on a quad where the parking comes in off the backside. So you can see at the top left, there's an alley. And so each of those units actually have some backyard. So the front is not dominated by a driveway and a garage. Basically have the dwelling unit, its entrance, and you've got some articulation. But the garages are tucked in off the back. And then there's some outdoor living space off the back of each unit. The one on the right is a displaced quad concept where you have two units attached. And here you can see on the top right, it's kind of a shared driveway to get to the garages. But again, the homes project out towards the street. And the one on the below that is you've got, uh, driveways, individual driveways that go into each one of those dwelling units. So again, there's no one right way or wrong way. There's just different ways that a quad could be developed by a particular developer. Next slide. So we had a lot of discussion. Uh, basically the committee said, yeah, they like the idea of the minimum max of the fifteen percent window coverage. A lot of that was having light coming into the units. Having a whole bunch of blank walls does not create a very pleasant or appealing street frontage, uh, from the public right-of-way. But having those doorways and having those windows and so forth, um, is a plus. On the issue about garages and the parking, again, the committee was like, well, there are different ways that it can be done. And again, no one way is the correct way. Next slide. Townhouses. So on this one, uh, we were looking at the orientation, again, about the windows. How do the driveways and the accesses work? Because when you get into a townhouse or a rowhouse concept, you could end up with a design type that is nothing but dominated by driveways going into garages. The other way of thinking about it is, oh, you have these townhouses, but all the garages are off the back, off of an alley or a shared driveway. Next slide. So here is an idea just about some of the, the main entrance features. And this is similar to some other drawings we saw. The one on your left, uh, doesn't have a porch. It's basically a walkway that comes into the main entrance. It's got some windows along the front. It's got a garage tucked off to the side. The drawing on your right-hand side actually has a covered porch. And so you're stepping up onto that porch. So it adds a little more character to that front-facing facade out to the public street. Next slide. Here is another version of what a townhouse could look like. And so different ways, you could have projecting kind of porches on the unit. You could have units that have just a main entrance and they've got an awning. You could have one that has no awning, but you may have some articulation or a balcony up on the second floor. And then the one that's identified as D is kind of a, a generic entrance into a unit, but it's got a dormer, uh, up on the second floor. So again, designers and architects could look at different ways to how to put these different combination of pieces together to create that, uh, a pleasing, street-facing appearance. Next slide. Window coverage. So this, already saw this drawing. So again, looking at, you know, windows on the upper floors, on the ground floor, and then that main win, door entrance going into the, into the structure. And so, but the premise here is a minimum-maximum. We could require less than fifteen percent of window indoor entrance, but we cannot require more than fifteen percent by administrative rule. Next slide. So here's some different ways of thinking about how these units from a planned view might look. On your left-hand side, a garage, it's kind of dominates. It goes into the ground floor of each of those units. But there's some articulation between the units on their setback to the street. In your top right, um, there, the parking is at the rear of the buildings and it comes off of a drive aisle or could be an alley that goes into those garage units. And then the bottom right is kind of a combination where you have a detached, kind of rowhouse concept, but there's a drive aisle that goes in between the units and then it goes to the garages that are on the backside. And so what the committee would, again, was looking at here is allowing the most flexibility instead of being very prescriptive and say, we're only gonna allow this type of townhouse or rowhouse is let the market drive and let the architects and the designers drive what those units would look like and how that parking would occur. Next slide. So I kind of recovered most of all of that. So next slide, please, Robin. Cottage clusters. So this is something new. We haven't really, very few of these design types in town. There's one by City Hall down on Second Street across from the parking, public parking lot where there are some cottages. So there are a few examples, but it, most of those are older units and nothing new has been done in several decades. There is in this, there's a, a maximum building footprint for a cluster, and that's nine-hundred square feet. And, but you could have a building envelope of eighteen-hundred square feet. You have to have a minimum of a hundred and fifty square feet of common courtyard space per unit. And so the concept is you create this courtyard and that common space is that courtyard in between the units themselves. Uh, there's some questions that we're trying to get answers to about pedestrian access. The administrative rule says four feet, but it doesn't meet ADA requirements. And so we're trying to get clarification. Does that actually need to be five feet? Or not? We do not have that answer yet. Accessory structures are limited to four-hundred square feet. So if you had a detached garage, which would be an accessory structure in this place, uh, case it has a limitation on its size. And then parking. And by and large, parking is more in a parking field that is detached from the cottage clusters themselves. Next slide. So these are some examples. And so here you can see on the left is that there's a, a parking field. Our current code says you can have no more than seven spaces in a row, um, before you have to have a landscape island. So our standards would be a little bit different. But again, we're looking at all of those. But you see the common courtyard area between the units, the four units at kind of the bottom of this slide. And then you see the units up to the north. And of course, a couple of those face in towards that, that courtyard area. Uh, on this drawing also is that you can see on your right-hand side, the lower right area is that there are some garages. One is a detached garage, one is an attached garage for that unit. And they would have a drive aisle that would service. So this kind of schematic shows you a variation of how a cottage cluster development could occur. Next slide. This is a similar drawing, same drawing as it was before. Um, and so we're gonna have to look through our code about setbacks and distance for landscaping to property perimeters, the size of landscape islands in a parking lot. Ours are five feet, uh, from inside to inside. This drawing shows four. Again, we allow up to seven spaces in a row. Then you have to have an island. This drawing basically is showing five. This drawing, kind of that detached garage in the lower right is a carport rather than enclosed. Uh, so we have to look at code language about carports and garages, uh, because we have different definitions and see if we have to make any modifications to those. Next slide. Here's an example of what a cottage cluster could look like. Uh, it's different. You've seen this graphic before. So you've got the cluster in the center with the courtyard, and then you have units around the perimeter. Uh, one of the issues with this design type, we're not sure if it would meet the administrative rule requirements. But this is a type of development that has occurred in Oregon by Hayden Homes. Next slide. Here's another Hayden Home, uh, project. And again, you've seen this. And you can see where track B is in the center of this slide. That's kind of the courtyard. All of these units are served by alleys, uh, into their garages. Um, but then if you get to the right-hand side of this slide, you really don't, you don't have the courtyard. But you've got the garages that come, um, off of this public easement that's in the interior. And again, we've looked at this and we're not sure if this particular concept actually meets the current administrative rule. Next slide. So we had a lot of conversation about cottage clusters and courtyards. And questions came up about can we, uh, require more, uh, open space? No. Could we require yes? Less? Yes. If you have less, are you creating an adequate open space environment for this type of development? Uh, again, the committee has not resolved that yet, but they're considering that. And then a whole wide variety of, um, how parking would occur between parking fields, carports, garages, attached garages, detached garages. Next slide. Next steps. Next slide. So this is where we're at. So, um, we're having a meeting with the advisory committee next week. Their packet actually went out today. So if you have any interest, you can look at the city's website, go to community development, go to planning, go to the middle housing page, and you can see the current set of code language. There have been revisions from what's in your packet this evening. We're looking to do an open house on February twenty-third. That will be virtual. Uh, we'll be doing a online survey like we did on the first phase of this project. That will be open from February twenty-fourth through March ninth. And then we'll tabulate all of that information. And the committee's last meeting is on March tenth. On that day, they will be reviewing the final proposed code language for duplexes, and they will be reviewing the draft code language for the other, uh, middle housing concepts. Uh, we have to have the duplex regulations in place by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-one. And for the other middle housing, we have to have that in place by June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-two. You may remember that City Council said, yes, we know we have to comply with the duplex provisions, but we also want to deal with the other middle housing types. And so right now in our schedule, we have the other middle housing coming back to, uh, planning, commissioning, council in, uh, the fall, later, later part of the fall of twenty-twenty-one. Next slide. And we're done. Forty-four slides in what? Twenty-three minutes?
Not a bad average.
So this is just an opportunity, if you have kind of any observations based upon the language that was in this preliminary draft, again, we've, uh, between the consultants and staff, we've looked at it. We are, I've made a whole bunch of suggestions. There are pieces uh, of this that are tied to our public improvement standards in our development code. Uh, that's the transportation, water, stormwater, wastewater. And so we need to step back and we're looking at, well, how do you do rain gardens with all of these? If you had a conversion of a single-family home to a duplex, our code says you need to have separate services for water and wastewater. And how does that occur? We're looking at if you do a conversion of a home into a duplex or a triplex or a quad. What's the best way to say this is what's the the review type that it has to go through? We have a type one, two, and three. Type one is basically the director's decision is clear and objective standards. Type two has subjective standards in it. There's another provision in state laws that all of our needed housing has to be clear and objective. And so we're writing all of these regulations so that they are clear and objective. And then there could be an alternative track of subjective standards. We're breaking our code out so that duplexes and single-family have the same requirements. Right now, our code reads that multifamily is three units and above, and we're going to have to change that so that there are standards for triplexes. There are separate standards for quads. We'll have separate standards for cottage clusters. We have revisions to make to our townhome regulations so we comply with administrative rule. So what that means is that multifamily now will mean five units and above. And we also have to do reporting to the state because we are rent burdened community and breaking it down to single-family duplex, triplex, quads, cottage clusters, townhomes, and accessory dwelling units. So there's, there's a lot of, lot of things. We're clarifying, making sure that all of the definitions in our code, that the language within the body of the regulations match, found a lot of things that were inconsistent. So we're cleaning that all up. There will be conversations we'll be having next week with engineering about, well, how do you make these? If you have driveways for triplexes and how do we make all the public infrastructure work? Driveway spacing requirements. How do we put in street signs, fire hydrants? How do, how do street trees fit into all of this? And so there's this whole trickle down. When you look at just the basic zoning patterns, say, oh, allow this. Then you go down to the next level and say, oh, now we got all this infrastructure. How does the infrastructure work to serve each of these particular units or types of development that are going in? So the again, the version that just came out today for the committee is a update to what I sent out to you in your packet. So I'll stop there. I've been rambling. Questions? Before we get there, I see Mayor Rogers has arrived. So maybe we'll stop for a moment because the mayor had some comments he would like to share with the commission.
Right. Well, Doug, Doug, thank you so much. Sorry, I didn't get on at the beginning of your meeting. I was actually on another meeting with the Latino Parents Group for the school district. But I'm basically here simply to thank you all. I know, I know some of you, some of you I've known for years, others I do not know. And once this COVID things get over, I want to be able to meet you all in person. But really, I'm just here to thank you and to let you know how important the work you do is. You all have the unenviable position of having the most detailed work of any of the committees for the city. And, and we really just cannot thank you enough for, for all that you do. So you know, if ever, if ever I can do anything to make it easier, I know you're in very good hands with with Bobby and with Doug, but if there's anything I can do, please don't ever hesitate. And again, thank you so much for your service. So great. That's all I got. So thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. So we'll jump back to thoughts, comments, ideas. I know it's a lot of information.
Commissioner Wright, on the density policies for low residential housing, it said that that would have to probably be omitted. And that what is on the, the low density now is now 4.4. But when they put like a duplex on it, it automatically raises that doubles it with a duplex theoretically. How does that work with duplexes versus single residents?
So the conversations I've had with, great question.
That a loaded question.
It's, it's a loaded question. So I've had conversations with our consultants. And so our Newburgh and many other communities are based upon density. So our target density within our comprehensive plan for load for the LDR R1 is 4.4. But that's a target. You can exceed the target and that's, and that target is based upon gross acres, not net. So right now we're running it. The HNA says we are historic density for LDR is 4.8 dwelling units per gross acre. So the net is even higher than that because you can take out 25% for right of way. So it's a target. And so we've had a lot of conversations about, oh, do we need to put language in our code in our LDR that says that, you know, by allowing duplexes, you are exempt from a maximum density so that we can allow, because we can, we cannot do anything that prohibits duplexes where we allow detached single-family homes. And so the current version that went out to committee has language that addresses the question that the commissioner just brought up of how we're addressing density. Then of course, every code's unique. And then we have these areas in LDR where we have densities of 4.2 and 6.5 and so forth. And again, we're looking at language that somehow would exempt if you're allowing duplexes in those from that density provision. Honestly, the packet that went out to the committee today, that has not been resolved. We need to talk with the committee at this meeting next week and then at their meeting in March to get a resolution to that density issue. We've also had questions to the state about how do we deal with this density component? Because we have other requirements that we have to be efficient with the land supply that we have. And so we need to increase our density. We've also got the challenge is that with the middle housing provision, it essentially allows it everywhere where we allow single-family homes. So you could have a quad in a, an area that has single-family homes. There is a subset provision in the administrative rule, which is a I will, my words is a long and complicated technical analysis that you would have to go through, which we do not have the time and the money. So we'll be talking with the committee who says, we're going to allow this wherever we allow single-family homes. It's then up to the market to determine what product gets built. So we're not precluding the ability to build these other housing types. There is a kind of a 3% is that this other middle housing would include, would be no more than a maximum or estimated to be around, probably a better way of saying it, 3% of the new housing types. And if you do that, when you kind of start to crunch the numbers, it's not a huge number of additional units. It's like, you know, 1.5 dwelling units per 10 acres of land roughly. So yes, there's, there's, it's complicated. We're trying to figure it all out here in the next month, month and a half.
I noticed that obviously the public, when answering the questions, parking was a huge issue. Is there any way the city can offer developers parking subsidies to develop parking structures within the building design?
Is anything possible? Yes. Is, is everything realistic? No. You know, where would the money come from to offer that? I do not know. The city council did approve a construction excise tax. So that is a 1% tax on all new residential, commercial, industrial development. They, with the intent, we believe we can generate about $300,000 a year where we could partner with developers to build affordable units that are 80% or less of median family income. That would then require a deed restriction and a contract between the city and the developer. It could be, by doing that, then they do not have to pay the construction excise tax. And we're actually investing dollars into a unit. So by that investment of dollars, there may be a way that that could be considered like some type of financial assistance to get to your question.
Nice. I like that. That's a good option. Sounds, sounds like something that should be looked into in the future. I like it. And the other options, providing other options and possibilities are great. That is a good, good option. Thank you, Doug.
I have a couple of questions. When we're ready.
Go ahead.
Ready, Doug?
I'm ready. I got my, I got my pen right here.
Got it. Making sure you're not overwhelmed with notes. First off, just a process question. I think the last Affordable Housing Commission meeting was Janu- late January. Has this been run by the Affordable Housing Commissioner? Is it possible to run it by them?
Yes, we have. I've been briefing them. They meet on a quarterly basis. So I did give a briefing at their meeting in January. They will get another briefing on this at their meeting in April before this proposal goes before the city council. So the planning commission will look at it, then the affordable housing commission will look at it, and then it will go to council.
Thank you. There is also in, in the realm of parking, how is the fee and lieu program going? Commissioner Wright mentioned some way to work with developers on parking. Is the fee and lieu program something that we could look into to end it for financially aiding the development of parking in these subunits?
Well, we, we did a modification to our regulations in the downtown area in our C3. It was brought to our attention and discussions with developers is that we had a requirement that there had to be certain lineage footage of commercial in a residential development. Let's use Second Street as an example. And that was turning away developers. And so what we did is we changed our code to add another tool into the toolkit to say, if you were developing, again, along Second Street as an example, is that you did not have to do the commercial. That's one piece of it. The second piece was, is that you could pay a fee in lieu to the city for your required parking. So in the downtown area, again, it's based upon the number of bedrooms that you have. But we'll just for simplicity, we'll say it's one, one parking space for dwelling in it. If you only had the room to put in 15 spaces, but you were required to have 20, you could pay the city a fee that's established, it's in our fee resolution for those additional five parking spaces. And then we would use those funds to acquire land and build surface parking to help meet the parking demand for those particular units. Here, the issue is different because we're not in a commercial area. We're in a residential area. And I'm not sure that a developer would, would say, well, I want to pay the city a fee X number of dollars for a parking space because then we're out buying land from that same developer to use for surface parking. And that more than likely they'll go, oh, well, we'll, we may build a unit and we won't have a garage, but we'll have a driveway leading up and that will be the one required space. Or they could build a garage and have the driveway leading up to that garage. And effectively, they've got two. Now, the reality is, is that people fill up their garages with stuff and they don't use it for their cars. I'll use my example. Half of my garage is my toys. The other half has my truck. And so, you know, if you drive down the street and look at anybody's house when they got their garage door open, do they truly use it for parking or do they use it for storage? So I, I don't know the exact answer, but I'm not sure that the model we use downtown would work in the residential areas. And one of the things we, I think we do not want to do is we don't want to build parking structures out in the residential area. I think that would, that would be a significant change to the character of the residential areas. Other questions, Colin?
Just one more. In the public comments, there were a few that expressed concern over accessibility, specifically railing, I believe is a concern for elderly folks, disabled folks, children. Has that been looked into by the CAC or by staff?
Now, you know, ADA requirement, sorry. Here's where we get to a little bit of unknowns. The building code division is having to make some modifications to their regulations as well. So the way the system had worked is we, what we call one and two family homes from a building code perspective. That would be single-family homes and/or duplexes. When you got to triplexes and blah, above, then you started to get into the ADA accessibility issues. Now with the change in the law is, does a triplex and a quad or a cottage cluster still have to meet ADA accessibility issues or not? And that kind of gets to the issues about railings. And so some of the graphics I showed you, you could have a walkway going up into the entrance of a home, or you might stop and you might have a porch and you have to go up a couple of stairs. If that was a triplex, does that access need to meet ADA? We've asked that question. We do not have the answer yet.
Interesting. Who would be the, this is Commissioner Wright, who would be the deciding factor? Is that a federal issue or a state issued decision? Are they, since it's an act, American Disability Act, would that be federal?
It, it would be federal and the state has to comply. And so again, that's why we have to get some answers from the state on the compliance and meeting the federal requirement or not, given how they defined in the current Oregon Structural Specialty Code, what is one and two family versus what is a multifamily?
Yeah, I was wondering about that myself. Building buildings like that, it's going to appeal to a certain age group more, probably.
Well, you know, when we, when we typically do a project now, if you were doing an apartment project, you know, all the sidewalks have to be ADA accessible. They may have some specifically identified ADA accessible units that have to have the slope, the rise over the run, the railings and so on. And so the question is, well, does that same issue now still apply to a triplex or a quad?
Right. So there is, yeah. Good.
I can say this, you know, legislature passed the bill, became state law. DLCD with a very large committee wrote administrative rules. And if we've done this long enough, I have, we know that there will be things that will have been inadvertently overlooked that will come back and there will be future changes to administrative law, which requires local governments to do additional changes to their regulations. It's just inherent in the system.
Just a little ironing out over time, right? Sounds good. Well, thank you, Doug. I really appreciate your time and answering questions this evening. And for all the staff and everybody working on this. Wonderful. And the committees is well appreciated.
Any other comments from commissioners? Again, this will be coming back to you officially. We're going to have to do a public hearing. So this one will be a little bit different. It will be a legislative public hearing, but I have to do a thing called a Measure 56 notice. That means every property owner within the city that has a residential designation, and those are listed out in the material, R1, 2, 3, the RP and the AR, they will get a notice. There's a prescribed timeline. We have to provide that notice. And they could come to your public hearing, that legislative hearing and provide comments. Again, we'll be doing another open house. We'll be doing a survey, getting feedback from individuals that we will incorporate into the final version before the ad hoc committee and then before it comes and, and the affordable housing commission for their recommendation before it gets to the planning commission for your hearing.
Doug, this is Commissioner Capri. I, I just have a question on the parking still. We're not We're not exactly inner city. And most people are dual income homes and probably would have two cars. Is there going to be an expansion of public transportation in Newburgh? I, because I just keep hearing you're kind of thinking one, almost one and a half cars per household or something. And from what I know in my life, it seems like every household has got at least two cars. Or in Portland, they're on bicycles and taking public transportation. So I guess I'd just like to know what the plans are in the future for that.
So Yamhill County through the Yamhill County Transit Area updated their transit master plan. And some of you who are on the commission at the time, we brought forward to you within the last year, a whole series of code updates to implement that transit plan. As part of that transit plan, we've identified in having loop systems. So think about a loop system up in the northwest, a loop system in the northeast, in the southwest, in the southeast. It will take time for that to occur. It takes dollars. You need more buses. You need more staff. You need to work on the routing and how that all works. So, you know, as of today, is there, oh, you allow this middle housing and all of a sudden the transit system changes its routes and programs? Will it happen immediately? No. Will it happen over time? Hopefully it will. Again, it gets back to dollars.
Does anyone else have any questions? Well, hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. It looks like we have a workshop scheduled, so.
No information for workshop tonight.
I did not find the information either, so I was curious about. I was, I was thinking you might surprise me.
Well, I'm full of surprises, but not tonight.
Okay. Okay. Then we'll move on to items from staff.
So it's your March meeting. I'm intending we'll bring the economic opportunities analysis before you for a recommendation to the city council. Schedule got shifted around a little bit, and I know there have been questions about quasi judicial public hearing training. So I thought I'd take an opportunity at March 11th and we go through some training. I've done this with commission members in the past. So some of you will be a repeat. Some of you, it'll be brand new. Charles, it'll be brand new for you.
Me too.
Yeah. And Robert, it, well, you've been through it, but you just haven't been through it as a planning commissioner. March 15th, remember to put on your calendars. You have a joint meeting with the city council on a city council night, which is Monday, March 15th at 6:00 PM. Where we're going to be talking more about middle housing. Then April 8th is kind of a busy night. We've got an annexation. The riverfront annexations will probably get pushed back. We've got some development regulations, water master plan, wastewater master plan and, and vertical housing. So the eighth is going to be kind of a, a filled meeting. So make sure you have your dinner and you're ready to go. Don't fall asleep. But we'll have a, a series of hearings that, that particular evening. In May, the hearing will come back about the middle housing, the stormwater master plan. And then there's another amendment that we're initiating to our development code on annexation and our annexation chapter. It's one follow-up piece to the riverfront master plan implementation that we need to finish up. And then again, it's important to put on your calendars. June 7th will be another joint planning commission city council meeting. That's on a Monday night. So you have two meetings that week in June, just like you do in March. And we'll be talking about the other middle housing. So that's the tries, quads, cottage clusters and townhomes. So I've got you kind of booked out through, through July with material and there's, there's some tickler of other things that are on the list. We just haven't got to yet.
Thank you. So this time, are any items from commissioners? No one? Okay, then we can go ahead, I suppose, and put a wrap on the meeting and escape to our wherever we need to be before snow cop, snowpocalypse hits. But, okay, so at this time, I'd like to adjourn the February 11th, 2021 meeting of the Newburgh Planning Commission. Thanks, everyone, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night, everybody.